Okay, let's, um, let's see, let's get the right paper. Let's call it order, the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, June 25th to order. Uh, if I could ask everybody to stand, please, to cite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll roll call, please.
Jim Batson. Pat Grudy.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Scott Luce. Karen Lundstedt. Mac Thurman.
Here.
Okay, so we know Jim Batson, Scott Luce, and Karen Lundstedt have to for the record. And, uh, let's see, our agenda today, we will, um, in the communications section, we're gonna add one thing, um, for recognition. We've got some student recognition tonight. Uh, we will open it up for public comment. We'll have the superintendent's report, which has a number of items. Um, we will vote on the consent agenda, um, which has extensive items on it. Brief updates from facilities and finance and program personnel. Um, there is nothing from property, correct?
Correct.
We don't have any news yet. Um, there's nothing from CEDOL and nothing from IASB. And then we will convene an executive session, um, tonight to review, uh, actually, we can, is anybody, uh, want to discuss the semi-annual, or can we move that up to the consent, um, agenda to approve those?
Uh, we can't move it to consent agenda because we didn't discuss it ahead of time. So, I've got that in mind.
So, we're gonna do it?
Yeah, we'll do it under my authority.
But that's coming out of the executive session.
Uh, if.
If you agree.
If you vote on that, right.
Okay, all right, so I'll hold that.
Yeah.
And then employment of employee five I L C S one twenty slash two C one. Okay? Um, we will be taking acti-- we will not be taking action tonight after, uh, the executive session.
Yeah, and just, and just to clarify on the agenda, because, uh, we, over the last year, we've tried to identify any time the board will vote on anything. The asterisk at the bottom of, uh, the second page of the agenda, uh, indicates the board will take, take action tonight. It will take no additional action, but it must take action to come out of closed session. So, that's what that asterisk means at the bottom of the agenda.
Yeah, we're gonna probably wanna clarify that.
So.
But, okay. Okay, all right, ready? And let's go back to the beginning. All right, student recognition.
Tom.
Sort of spacing, Bob is doing a guess right here, so, move forward.
Oh, yeah, sorry, my, my mistake. So, uh, we'll appoint Lisa Hassel as Secretary of Pro Tem.
LHS Principal Dr. Tom Kuhlandt.
All right, well, um, it gives me great pleasure to present to you once again, a young man that I know you are familiar with, because, uh, he has been here several times this year, um, for board recognition. And tonight, um, he is here on behalf of the boys' track and field team at Libertyville High School. And one thing that is really special in the state of Illinois is that we have, and I think it's a trend that we're gonna see in a lot more sports in the future, but we have the boys' track and field meet, but then we also have a division that they call the combined team meet, which is, um, uh, athletes who are, um, fully able-bodied in the way that Alex is, and athletes who have disabilities compete together for the same, for their school, and can win, um, state titles. So, this year, our boys' combined track and field team took second in the state of Illinois, um, which is a tremendous accomplishment. And one of our two athletes, uh, is here tonight with Coach Stuart Mendelson. Um, Alex Tam is here. He is a graduated senior, so soon to be a Miami of Ohio Red Hawk.
Yes.
Miami of Ohio Red Hawk. And, um, he took tenth place in the thirty-two-hundred-meter run and sixteen-hundred-meter run, and represented our team his, uh, his performance there, helped us earn second place. Um, I'll let Coach Mendelson talk a little bit more about Alex. The other athlete who we thought was coming but isn't here is Ethan Burkhart. Ethan, um, is our wheelchair racer. He took first place in the two-hundred, four-hundred, and eight-hundred-meter race, so he won three first-place championships. And he took second place in the hundred-meter race, and, uh, his scores with Alex's scores helped us earn second place overall. So, congratulations, Alex, and good luck to you.
Coach Stuart Mendelson.
Thank you for having us. Um, is with great pride and honor to present to the board tonight Alex Tam and Ethan Burkhart. In addition to both their unparalleled athletic talent, Alex and Ethan are two of the most humble athletes of coach, and their constant demonstration of character and sportsmanship to their coaches, fellow teammates, and competitors are the example everyone should follow. The success that both Alex and Ethan had at the boys' track and field state meet helped bring a second-place team combined trophy back to Libertyville High School. Ethan qualified for state in all four wheelchair events, the hundred-meter, two-hundred-meter, four-hundred-meter, and eight-hundred-meter. On May twenty-sixth, at Eastern Illinois University, Ethan took runner-up in the hundred-meter but became state champion in the two-hundred, four-hundred, and eight-hundred-meter wheelchair races. Ethan did not only become state champion in the four-hundred and eight-hundred-meter wheelchair races, but is now the current state record holder in both the four-hundred and eight-hundred-meter wheelchair races. Ethan is not done with his quest to become even faster and better at his events. Last week, Ethan went to Arizona to compete at the Desert Challenge Race, where Ethan competed against athletes around the world, including professional adult athletes. Ethan reached his personal best in the two-hundred with a time of twenty-nine fifty-two. He achieved his personal best in the four-hundred with a time of fifty-five thirty-one, which is two-and-a-half seconds faster than his, his personal best. And Ethan also took third place overall in the eight-hundred-meter with a time of one-fifty-four six-four, three seconds faster than his personal best from this year. With all that said, we still have Ethan for two more years at Libertyville High School, as he will only be entering his junior year. Um, without a doubt, Ethan inspires me, the coaching staff, his teammates, and even athletes and coaches at other schools when Ethan competes at, uh, at the track meets. Alex, you wanna come up? Alex Tam qualified for state in the sixteen-hundred and thirty-two-hundred-meter events. For the sixteen-hundred-meter, Alex had to first run a preliminary race at Eastern on May twenty-fifth in order to compete in the finals for that race. Alex was in a heat of, of fourteen runners, and there were two heats. Of the two heats of fourteen runners, the winner of each heat would automatically advance, and the ten next best times would advance to the finals. So, only twelve of the twenty-eight runners would qualify to run the next day in the finals. Alex ran a four-eighteen, three seconds off his personal best, qualifying him to the finals the next day. The next day, Alex ran the thirty-two-hundred-meter race, taking tenth overall out of forty-three athletes who qualified in the event. With limited rest, Alex then ran the sixteen-hundred-meter final race and took tenth overall in that race also. Alex ran three races in less than twenty-four hours, and to put things in perspective, only one other athlete who ran all three races beat Alex. Alex has broken the Libertyville High School sixteen-hundred-meter record as a junior with a time of four, fifteen eight-seven. His senior year this year, Alex broke the Libertyville High School thirty-two-hundred-meter record with a time of nine-oh-eight five-three. The thirty-two-hundred-meter record had been standing for forty-one years prior to Alex breaking it by six seconds this year. Alex has had an athletic and academic career at LHS for the ages, as we have recognized Alex for his success at state and cross-country, his award of being all-state, all-academic, and today for his success at the state meet and track. Alex will be truly missed by everyone in the LHS community.
Alex Tam shakes hands with Coach Mendelson and Dr. Kuhlandt.
Yeah, I wanna echo that as well, that, um, you know, all of our seniors are fantastic, and we're gonna miss them all. Um, Alex is the type of student that everyone in the school knows, um, and people who don't even know he's an athlete know him as an extraordinary student and scholar, or they just know him in the halls as just an extraordinarily kind, polite, young man. He has made a huge impact on our school, and he will definitely be missed next year, that's for sure.
Hey, we're gonna take a couple of pictures, okay? Dad, come on over.
Alex Tam, Coach Mendelson, and Dr. Kuhlandt shake hands with Superintendent Prantus Lee and School Board President Pat Grudy. The group then poses four pictures.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And, uh, Dad, we normally recognize parents too, so, let's give Dad a round of applause for being our chief of staff. Good stuff. And by the way, you're, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you're also welcome to, okay? So, you're, you won't offend anybody if you leave, okay? Thank you. Okay, all right. No students tonight, so.
Superintendent Prantus Lee.
Okay, uh, yeah, sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Yeah, um, just, uh, note for the record, uh, our student board reps will start joining us, and our new student board reps, uh, will start joining us in August. So, for June and July, uh, we'll go right to the superintendent's report at meetings. First of all, uh, more good news, Peyton Newman, uh, V H H S, uh, class of two thousand twenty, was named Miss Illinois Outstanding Teen for two thousand eighteen. Peyton will compete for the title of Miss America's Outstanding Teen in July in Orlando. Uh, and, uh, her mother let us know of her tremendous accomplishment, and, uh, Dr. Gilliam actually went to the house, uh, to congratulate her, so, uh, we certainly wanna, uh, congratulate Peyton, and we look forward to, uh, her success. And, uh, we will recognize her in August, uh, at the board meeting. The following D one-two-eight students were named to the Daily Herald's two thousand seventeen-eighteen Lake County Academic Team. Kathleen Lund at LHS, Anmoa Parande at V H H S, Siraj Rajendran at LHS, and Gina Lu from V H H S was honorable mention, so congratulations to them. LHS counselor and activity sponsor Nancy Stevens received the distinguished service award from the Illinois Directors of Student Activities. Nancy has served as a dedicated and committed activity sponsor for several clubs over the years at LHS, including ACE, Best Buddies, and Cats Against Cancer. She has made countless connections with our students and has worked tirelessly to help students join clubs and get involved. She will be missed as she moves into retirement with the end of this past, um, school year. District on twenty-eight is the winner of the two thousand eighteen National School Public Relations Association, or INSpro, Golden Achievement Award. The award is part of the two thousand eighteen INSpro National School Communications Awards, which are open to all public and private schools and education organizations. D one-two-eight communications director Mary Todrick wrote and submitted the award entry, which details the public relations program process the district team followed in the development of the new D one-two-eight mission daring. The INSpro Golden Achievement Award recognizes exemplary work in all aspects of school public relations, communication, marketing, and engagement. Award judges carefully sought, uh, outstanding achievement in the four steps of a public relations program. One, analysis of the need; two, planning to meet the need; three, execution and communication of the program; and four, formal evaluation. Each entry was judged individually against these award criteria, and the D one-two-eight met, entry met all of them. So, congratulations to the district, and thanks to Mary for her once again outstanding work, um, in the communications field on behalf of the district. Uh, second on the superintendent's report is school start time update, and, uh, we do wanna celebrate and confirm again that, uh, the start time of both schools, uh, next year will be eight forty-five. The two building teams are working, uh, through all of the, uh, processes, um, to, uh, register kids, transportation, you know, everything that we need to do, uh, to open school. Uh, and they are communicating with parents at, um, both campuses through, um, the buildings. And, uh, we thank them for, uh, their work under some time pressure, but we are very excited. Uh, and once again, um, the one-year contract agreement with the union allowed us to do a memorandum of agreement, um, on the school start time. So, uh, we wanna thank the union as well for, uh, their partnership in that process. Uh, next is, uh, LHS pool, uh, project update. Um, and, uh, the update is, if you drive by Libertyville, you will see substantial steel up on the building. Earlier in the evening, we reviewed, uh, at the, uh, Facilities and Finance Committee, uh, the progress of the building and, uh, the progress of the steel erection. Uh, started with no steel erected today, and a pretty good chunk, chunk of steel erected on that, um, uh, building. So, we'll, uh, put pictures on the website, uh, so people can follow that development. Plus, we do have the live, uh, pool cam that's in operation from roughly eight in the morning until four in the afternoon. Uh, just to emphasize again, we'll, we will, um, with some of the weather that we've had, I think we've had roughly five inches more of rain than we normally have at this time of year. Uh, we've still been able to make amazing proj-- prog-- progress, but we are likely looking for, uh, late spring in two thousand nineteen, uh, for, uh, completion time if we get a break and the weather is cleaner, uh, that date, uh, may moved up, but that's what, uh, we've updated the board on, so we want the community, community, uh, to be aware of that in conversation as well. Tom Koulentis joined, uh, the board for the earlier program, uh, Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, uh, provided a brief update on LHS parking for FY nineteen. And Tom, if you can just, uh, do a quick summary for, uh, uh, the community and for the video, that would be wonderful.
Certainly. Um, so, uh, this year, we worked with students at Libertyville High School to determine a plan for parking. Um, the students created an idea to create carpool incentives for students. Um, this would be for all seniors, and, uh, if they chose to carpool with another senior, they would be guaranteed a spot on campus for the entire school year. Uh, they would be given a designated spot that would be, um, kind of a prime location, and they would be able to personalize their spot by painting the, the ground where they park, um, with a message and, uh, design. We had approximately eighty-five students, or, excuse me, uh, we had approximately eighty-six, um, carpool spots requested for a hundred and seventy-five total students, and, um, that was a huge number. We're very excited about that. There's, uh, obviously benefits for the students to park on campus, but from, um, a hundred and seventy-five seniors choosing to carpool, there are environmental benefits and traffic benefits, we believe, for the entire community. Last year, we had approximately one hundred seniors who needed to park at Brainerd. Because of the carpool, um, incentive this year, we only have currently eighteen seniors who need to park at Brainerd campus, and we'll be working with those students all year to, uh, see if there's a way we can eventually bring them over to the main lot. Um, we will open Brainerd then on a first-come, first-served basis each day for, uh, juniors who wish to park. So, we're very excited, the student idea of carpooling. Um, our kids came together and, um, wanted to do this, and it's not only gonna affect senior parking, it'll affect juniors, and, as we said, have environmental benefits and hopefully traffic benefits for the community as a whole.
And as an addendum to that, there's also long-term parking, uh, solution that the board has been, uh, working on for, uh, the past year in the administration, uh, together along with the Village of Libertyville. In fact, tonight, uh, Associate Superintendent Brian Kelly, Board Member Scott Luce, our district architect and engineer, are at the Libertyville Village Plan Commission meeting in the next stop, uh, step of the process to approve our long-term parking plan, if approved, uh, on, in, on the west side of, uh, the campus. If approved, uh, we will pick up an additional sixty-seven to nine, uh, parking spaces, uh, on that, uh, west side of the campus. In addition to the forty parking spaces that we will get back, uh, once the construction's done, we can do some, uh, asphalt work that were in existence prior, uh, to the construction of, uh, new pools. So, that will significantly help parking, not only on a day-to-day basis, but also event parking as well, and will locate an adequate number of parking spaces, uh, around the new pool, the west gym, uh, and some of the facilities are on the west, um, side of, uh, the campus. So, uh, beyond the plan commission tonight, um, the, uh, issue will be heard and then voted on by, uh, the Village of Libertyville Board of Trustees at, uh, an upcoming meeting. So, uh, we will, uh, keep the board apprised of that progress as we move through that. So, any other questions from the board, or anything the administration wants to add, uh, to that? So, very exciting.
Just, I don't think you asked for public.
I know, I realize that, I'll go on, but back to that.
Okay, so, um.
Thanks for talking to.
Um, with, uh, that heard, then we will move on to number five on the superintendent's agenda, and that is FOIA request. And we had one request this month, and to read, read that request into the record. Uh, we received a request on five-thirty eighteen. Uh, the name of the requestor was James Bachman from the Illinois Retired Teachers Association, Executive Director. Uh, requested the names, district email addresses, and home addresses of retiring educators for the school, current school year. Uh, the follow-up is provided by Denise Swit, and, uh, we responded, um, on five-thirty two thousand eighteen. The deadline was six-six, um, eighteen. Uh, so, next on the superintendent's agenda tonight is the semi-annual review of closed session minutes. It is the recommendation, it is the recommendation of the administration, uh, to not release any of the closed, uh, session minutes. If the board concurs and votes with that recommendation, we will not need, uh, to discuss that issue in closed session. Of course, the board would like to have discussion, uh, of that topic, then we can do that in closed session tonight. So, um, so we would need a motion.
Okay, so anybody would like to discuss that in closed session? No? Okay, is there a motion to, um, keep the, uh, closed session minutes closed?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All right, any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, next on the superintendent's agenda tonight is the appointment of a new FOIA officer, uh, Carol Skodin. Um, Denise Swit is closing in on her, uh, last day, uh, and Carol will be coming in, so, uh, Denise has served as one of our FOIA officers in the district, and we need to formally approve her, uh, for that position tonight. So, the administration recommends, uh, the appointment of Carol Skodin as the, as a new district, uh, one-twenty FOIA officer.
I move to appoint Carol Skodin the new Freedom of Information Act Officer.
Sort of second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Anything else?
Okay, that's it for the superintendent's report.
All right, so I'll back up to correct my, my error. Um, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak? All right, seeing none, we will move on. All right, next, the consent vote agenda. Uh, we reviewed this earlier this evening, um, in committee, and I'd like to make one correction, and that is to remove item two H two from the agenda, and then ask for a motion to approve the agenda, the consent vote agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, second? Any discussion? Kevin, you wanna discuss now, or you wanna discuss?
No.
Okay.
So, again, we're removing three H two.
Uh, did I say two or three? I think it's two H two.
It's three H two.
Okay, so let me change, let me change that. Let's amend, we're gonna amend the motion. Hold on a second. Two or three, Kevin?
Three H two.
So, it's three H number two.
So, consent to vote agenda is number three, so, roll back up, yeah?
Yeah, but on the agenda, it's item, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay. It's confusing, yeah.
Okay, so again, just to be clear, we're gonna amend that motion, it's item H two is removed from the consent vote agenda.
Yeah.
And we're voting on that. Right, okay. All right, uh, roll call.
Um, Huber.
Yeah, we do.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now, let's go back to, um, item H two.
H two.
Okay? And I'll ask for a motion to approve item H two. As listed, is there a motion?
I move to approve item three H two.
Second.
Okay, now, further discussion?
Thanks.
Okay.
So, yeah, I just have a couple questions for our superintendent on three-year contract renewals.
Sure.
Uh, I struggle with the concept of extended contracts, three, five-year contracts, understanding that certainly these are top-of-the-line individuals and should be rewarded, which I'm trying to reconcile that with my belief of Illinois being an employment that will stay and things of that nature. Can you just kind of briefly review the, the three-year, the idea behind the three-year contract?
Sure.
The importance? Uh, again, I think we probably have some good kind protections in there if something happens in year one, so we're not sitting here paying out three years of contract and things. Just kind of help me understand the, the philosophy on three years.
Sure, I think at the administrative level, those are all good questions, by the way, Kevin, thank you. Um, at the administrative level, uh, of course, as we do with teachers and support staff, we are always trying to attract and retain, uh, the best of the best here, uh, in the business. Um, one of the ways we recognize that, uh, performance is by a multi-year contract. So, first and foremost, if we had an underperformer in the future, we would not be, or right now, we would not be recommending a three-year contract, uh, for someone, nor would we consider that, uh, in the future. Uh, it's important, uh, from a personnel standpoint for a couple of reasons. Uh, there is an extreme shortage of very talented administrators at the upper building level and at the district level. Uh, there's high competitiveness for those folks. Uh, so, as people do good work for us, we wanna recognize that good work. Um, we do, uh, as the board knows, we, uh, do a lot of due diligence before we hire, um, folks. We had lots of conversations about Tom and Dan, uh, and of course, we knew Brian Kelly very well before they moved into their positions, um, before. Uh, but prior to recommending a three-year contract for any, and we're really talking about kind of the assistant principal level up at the buildings, uh, the two-building principals, and the district-level, uh, leadership, uh, staff. So, having done that work, uh, reviewing that work, having conversations about that work, and always looking for continual approval, uh, improvement in, uh, work, um, um, we want to, if you will, lock our folks into, uh, their position, uh, because they're very competitive. Uh, it's very competitive to hire, uh, good people and try to attract people away from the district, uh, other districts like ours, for, uh, example. Uh, one of the ways we do that, and historically we've done that, uh, in the district, is to do, um, shorter-term, uh, for those position, um, three-year contracts. And, uh, we've had great success with that in the past. Uh, and to Kevin's question, so what would happen if we had somebody along the way that ended up not being a good performer? Um, in, uh, the review and evaluation, feedback process along the way, we would be, be having early, uh, and often conversations with those individuals. Um, we have, working with council, some very, um, strong termination language, uh, in our multiple-year contracts, uh, that certainly require the administrators, uh, you know, to perform, uh, at a high level, and also, uh, to conduct themselves accordingly. Uh, we have the ability to release people for cause, uh, if they're not doing their job. Uh, so there's a substantive process in place to ensure, uh, that people are along the way. So, um, one of Kevin's other questions is, so, you know, what happens if we put, we do bring somebody in, we've done our due diligence, and somehow it's not a good fit, or they run off the rails, uh, at the, at, end of that first year, and, uh, we feel we need to move? That conversation would happen with that employee early in the year, um, and we would work toward a resolution where the employee would, um, you know, resign from the district, or if we needed to, uh, we could go through a termination process if they weren't doing their job. And the question then becomes, uh, you know, are we gonna end up having to pay that person out in the second year if we, years two and years three? Uh, that, um, would be a negotiated settlement. Uh, it's very, it's very rare, in fact, I don't know of any examples, even at the superintendent levels, who tend to have five-year contracts, um, where, uh, you know, the marriage hasn't worked and so to, worked, so to speak, um, and there has been a settlement, let's say, of another four years of a contract. Uh, there's always a settlement, um, that moves down that line in a three-year contract, while more than a one- or two-year contract is less than a four- or five-year contract that a superintendent, uh, would typically seek, um, and have from a school district. So, uh, does that help, Kevin, somewhat?
Yeah, no, it helps.
With your question?
No, it, it helps. Another kind of a follow-up question on that, we're defining these as three-year contract renewals, so they're not new contracts. We certainly know in the state, the state has changed some of the contract language or parameters about a new contract versus renewals. How will these contracts be, are these considered new contracts going forward, or are these considered extensions of the existing contracts?
Well, these are actually new contracts going forward.
Okay.
So, what Kevin, Kevin is referencing is a pretty dramatic, uh, decision in, in, uh, the late hours of the budget conversation to get the budget passed this year. Um, and, uh, we're very close to this, particularly those of us on the bargaining team, the board members on the bargaining team, and we've shared this, uh, with the board. But, uh, as part of the budget agreement, um, pre-retirement raise- But as part of the budget agreement, pre-retirement raises on the last... Typically, the last four years of employment are now limited to 3%. So, beyond any of the contracts that are currently in place would be capped at 3%. I can tell you, and Dan and I reviewed this earlier, that there are no... There's no 6% language in any of our multi-year administrative contracts, except for the administrators who are currently on their pre-retirement contracts. Our administrative team, our upper-level administrative team, with a few exceptions, a couple of them sitting in the room tonight, are younger, and honestly, it'll be a number of years before they would qualify for that pre-retirement anyway, so we had the opportunity to leverage that. Now, in the teacher contract, the state, through conversation with our council, Lynn Himes, and the teacher retirement system, our current teacher contract will be grandfathered in because we reached a tentative agreement prior to the budget adoption. So, anyone who could retire in the next four years in the teacher contract could give us notice, met all the other criteria, could give us notice this year, and they would be covered. But that would be a very small group of people. So, for administrative purposes with our multi-year contracts, nobody is... Who's not already in the retirement contract can qualify for it anyway, and that language is not in the contracts. Dan, you verify that for me? Yep? So, and so that would be the response. And, of course, that's been an issue that's received lots of attention statewide and lots of attention in the Chicago area, and certainly in our district, and something that we've talked about with the board a number of times in the past.
So, my only... My last question would be, what is the downside? If you're... Is fiduciaries which were... Is there any downside to going out of three?
There... In my opinion and experience, in 26 years, I guess, now, at multiple levels of administration, there really is no downside. You only put high performers on three-year contracts, and if Tom doesn't mind me using him as an example, and Dan, you know, we were able to hire actually... And again, I would put Bryant Kelly in that same class, except Bryant came from inside, so we knew him. Tom and Dan were both high performers in their positions, and as the board knows, they've demonstrated that over and over and over again this year, as has Bryant. But these two gentlemen came to us from the outside, so we did not hesitate to give them... Offer them a three-year contract, knowing their previous work. And really, Kevin, at the end of the day, it is a marriage of sorts. So, it has to work for both parties for it to be successful. So, it gives Dan and Tom, for example, coming in, the clarity of knowing that, you know, we've done our homework on them, we believe they're high performers, and we're going to give them a three-year commitment. If that marriage doesn't work, we've got the tools, and frankly, they have the ability to leave with sufficient notice prior to the end of the school year. So, in my view, there's really no downside if we continue to do what we've done historically here from a human resource standpoint, in terms of our due diligence on the front side, working with our people and their growth, you know, in the course of their employment, and then making decisions and moving forward. But we would have no one on this list that we had any concerns about, and if we did, they would not be on the three-year list.
All right. Thank you for your...
Okay. Any other questions?
Any other questions? All right. So, can I ask... Well, we have a motion in second already, right?
Yes.
All right. Anything else? All right. Roll call, please.
Thurman.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All right. Matt, do you want me to go back?
Whatever is...
Yeah, I apologize. It seems... I got to put my glasses on this time. I did want to add an other to the communication thing. I'll turn it over to Matt. Or Matt Thurman. We don't have the line item for new business on here, do we?
But we've got a number on the bottom, and we're not voting, so...
There's another here.
Yeah. So, Matt, you can do that under my...
Go.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was my plan, and I apologize.
No worries. I have a statement I'm reading, so you're with me. I would like to begin by notifying the board, the administration, and the public that as a result of my full-time occupation, I will unfortunately have to relocate my residency. Being a member of this board has been one of the most influential and prideful honors I have undertaken in my life. Through this group's collective dedication to education and responsible community stewardship, we have continued to grow District 128 as one of the leading public school districts, and not just the state, but the nation. From day one, I was committed to representing the interests of the young people in this district. As a young-ish person myself, I understand the dynamics and pressures that people in this generation suffer from on a day-to-day basis. From the rapid advancement in technology and our immersion in it, to the pressures associated with an ever-growing public display into our lives in the form of social media, these challenges are not easy to solve, and the role in society will only continue to grow. However, this district and board has taken the necessary steps to take these challenges head-on, and for that, I applaud them. In a little over a year, I'm proud to say we have accomplished much, from introducing our daring mission, which will propel the district for many years to come, to the ongoing construction of the state-of-the-art auditorium at Libertyville High School, to the implementation of a later start time, which will have profound health benefits to our students, which in turn will not... Which in turn will only grow their academic potential. This board's commitment to education and equal commitment to fiscal responsibility is something this community can be proud of. The diversity of interests and knowledge that is featured among this board allows for expertise in almost every discussion, no matter the topic at hand. Just over a month ago, I found myself distributing diplomas at Libertyville's graduation. This was in the very same building that I had received mine seven years prior. Many of the students I handed diploma to were the younger brothers or sisters of a student that I had graduated with, some even my close friends. This surreal moment spoke volumes to the quality of education that this district is committed to. For I was afforded an education of such excellence and quality that has allowed me to go places and do things that unfortunately many others are not afforded. And I thank all my teachers, coaches, and members of the board and administration during those years for that. I also want to thank my fellow members of the board, both past and present, for their openness to new membership and willingness to take the time and effort in explaining many of the complexities associated with this position, particularly President Pat Grudy, whose exceptional leadership and unrivaled knowledge of school finance makes him one of the leading board presidents in the state. Also Superintendent Lee for his decades-long commitment to academic excellence, and once again, willingness to take time to explain the many nuances to us, although I would say sometimes you can cut it down a little bit. Additionally, I would like to thank Brian Kelly, Dan Stanley, Rita Fisher, and Mary Todderyk, Mark Koopman, Denise Swett, and Carol Scodin for their outstanding work at the administrative level, as well as Tom Coentis and John Gilliam for their leadership at the school level. Lastly, I'd like to thank my family, friends, and the residents of this community who put their faith in me. Thank you. Consequently, I am announcing my resignation effective at the end of tonight's meeting. It has been a wonderful journey, and although this decision was not an easy one to make, it is necessary. So, thank you all, and I look forward to my continued involvement in this district and community through other avenues.
All right. Well done. Just a few comments. I know from my perspective, one, thank you for the kind words, and I know the long and thoughtful process you went through to get to this point. I would like to just say that in the short time, and I'll say too short a time, that you've been part of this board, you've been very inspiring as a not-so-youngish member of the board. Your insights and your close connections to, you know, really those things that we try to do, I think, have been very helpful and will be sorely missed. It's not a perspective that we've honestly had the opportunity to share very often. And I'll tell you, when you go through a public election, as we go through every couple of years here, it's a little scary because you're never sure what you're going to get. But I can honestly say, in your case, we were lucky to get you, and certainly wish you the very best in all of your endeavors.
I appreciate it.
You're inspiring, you make the rest of us hopeful, and I hope you do great things down in Chicago.
Thank you.
There's plenty to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Matt, I would just say, on behalf of the administration, it was a pleasure to welcome you home. Again, as a school board member, because as you and I have talked many times, I was here when you graduated in a role, so it was really cool to see that come full circle. You've been a very analytical and independent thinker on the board of a group of analytical and independent thinkers, and I think that's what makes this board, you know, really good and a great board, and you've certainly added, you know, just wonderful context to that. So, appreciate everything, and I think mostly, we would say, on behalf of the administration and teachers in the district, we're really proud of you.
Thank you.
You know, we're really proud of your work on the board, and we're really excited and happy for you with, you know, your career adventure, and we know you're going to do great. And like we say to all of our retirees every year, you know, no matter where you go, you're always welcome, you know, back in District 128. So, if we can ever do anything to help or assist you in the future, don't hesitate to ask us, because it would be an honor to do that. So, thank you for your service to the board.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Now, glasses back on. Square.
Board President Pat Grudy.
Personnel, I believe, correct? No, wait a second. I was at the end of the... Facilities and Finance Committee. Okay. Kevin, you going to take that?
Sure.
Board Member Kevin Hulerman.
So, this evening, we have Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, and we talked about many different things, first of which was deferred revenue concept and the audited financial statements. I'll ask Dan to briefly explain what was discussed and what we're going to do.
Yeah, just the conversation in our annual financial reporting to look at deferred all of the property tax revenue rather than just a portion that we've done. So, it's listed as an action, because we weren't sure at this point, but there's no action to take it this time for the revenue. Can you continue to explore that and bring it back?
So, we will not vote on that item.
Correct.
Okay. Potential item B is a resolution calling for a public hearing regarding the 2019 budget. Again, we'll defer to Dan on this to explain what's going on.
Yeah, so, just announcing and we'll be publishing in the paper, the announcement of a public hearing on the budget in August, at the date of the hearing, but it's in... I think it was the 13th. And it's been in our board calendar as well, so...
Yeah, I think it was the 13th.
I think it was the 13th.
So... All right. Fund balance is always a...
So, do we need a motion on that?
Do we need the resolution?
Yes.
All right.
So, I thought I recall, the motion is to call for a public hearing on the fiscal year 2019 budget. This is the tentative budget.
It's just a budget hearing. It doesn't qualify for...
So, it's fiscal 2019 budget on August 13th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll... Any discussion? Roll call.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
All right. So, now, I think we're going to talk about one of our favorite topics.
That may be beyond my abilities at the moment.
It might be. Fund balance is usually beyond both of our abilities, but Dan's going to simplify it for us. So, Dan.
Part of GASB 54 a few years ago, one of the ways that in our financial reporting, year-end financial reporting, that we can be more clear in the amount of money that is available or already reserved for other purposes is to commit fund balance, and so we have before you a resolution for your approval. It's required by GASB 54. It's for... Do you have... Sorry. Right next to me, I gave it away. Yeah. For... So, it's calling for reserve, so to commit, and so this is based on GASB 34, to commit 16,321,000 of the fund balance from the Operations and Maintenance Fund for the purposes of supporting the following projects, and these projects are already under construction. These are already bid and awarded and are happening right now, but we will be incurring a lot of those costs in fiscal year 19, which is next fiscal year. So, essentially, it's 15 million is for the Aquatic Center at LHS, 800,000 is for the second-floor HVAC renovations at LHS, and 521,000 is reserved for the... Or committed for the Vernon Hills Science Lab renovation. So, that's the fiscal year 19 portion. So, all together, it's 16.321 million to commit. So, all this is basically almost like a footnote or just part of our reporting on our financial base.
How much are approved, again?
It's 16,321,000.
Off the pool? What was it?
It was a pool.
Okay.
Now, to vote to approve all that, all you really have to do is vote to approve the resolution to commit fund balance, and that's all that's required.
All right. So, I move to approve the resolution as presented for committing 16.321 million dollars of our fund balance.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to note, I congratulate you for doing that. We appreciate your efforts to make it clearer, not only for the board, but for anyone, any concerned taxpayer who's looking at our finances, to see really what we are working on. So, thank you for that. Second.
Any other discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. I think prevailing wage resolution... Dan, we need a resolution on this every year, you said?
Correct. It's required by law, prevailing wage resolution done every year, essentially stating any kind of work that we're doing, the public work, which is us, that will be paid prevailing wages, and we have the...
So, I move to approve the prevailing wage resolution as presented in item 40.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Hugh, it sounds like we have some ComEd stuff we need to approve, item 4E. Is that you, Dan?
Yeah, so, one of the projects, kind of done in conjunction with the pool, but it... Most of it is distinct from the pool, is putting in an ETO that will allow the LHS facility to be connected to more than one power grid, so that in case one of the power grids goes down, it will switch over and maintain power at that. So, this contract is for... To engage with ComEd to do that for the 620, and as we noted in the committee, there's additional work that's required, because we have to put in the conduit and the piping in the ground. We're still working on pricing for that, so we talked about what kind of ranges for that to be, but that's something separate from this.
How much was coming in?
Pardon? I'm trying to break it up. I have it in...
I thought you said 620.
620. It's like 621, I believe. So...
I thought it was like 200.
It's 2... I'm trying to bring it up, I have it in.
I thought you said 620.
600, it's like 621, I believe, so.
I thought it was like 200.
It's two, I'm sorry, maybe 261,000.
Yeah.
I need to bring it up.
Let's bring it up and get it ready. I know it wasn't six.
I knew there was a two and a six. 261,000, 357,7.
Okay. 261, what? Okay. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the ComEd contract for 261,357,7?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any other question?
So this is separate from the already budgeted expenses for the pool, where it's part of the pool budget?
30,000 is, is part of the.
Part of that.
This is 230-ish is separate.
Got it.
Okay. Again, this one's important because we've had situations of blackouts in the school, and that's a lot to improve that.
Correct.
Right? Okay. Roll call.
Thurman.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next.
So we have educational service agreement.
Yeah, so this is through our community ed program, Connects Curriculum International, to provide an educational program through that. It's very straightforward, we have several other arrangements like this with the community ed programs, so this is additional, of course, they wanted to offer. The, there'll be a, a net gain for the district, so any contract that is designed that could earn more than a thousand dollars, the board is required to approve, so that's a big reason we're bringing in 40 for approval as well, so.
How much is this one, Dan?
It, it, it'll, it's really just an agreement, it depends on how many kids enroll or how many students enroll, adults enroll.
All right, I move the educational service agreement is presented in item 4A.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Thurman.
Motion carries.
Looks like maybe the final item might be some transportation that we need to approve?
Yes. So I'm trying to get to that page. Yes. So we, as we've talked in committees and at other meetings, we chose to bid, chose to bid out services for special education transportation for the 1819 year. We received free, five bids from American Taxi, City Care, Safeway, Top Line, and Chain of Lakes. Per the school code, we, the bid is to be awarded first by considering the bidder's able to provide safety and comfort for the, for the students, stability of service, and any other things that we put in our requirements, and then the price. So to that, we're recommending the routes, the vast majority of the routes be awarded to City Care, as are outlined in there, there's, there's many, many, many routes that are there, so vast majority is to City Care. The other contractor that we believe is able to provide the requirements of the school code at the best price. There are also routes that are awarded to Chain of Lakes, because there, there's some specific specialized needs that they can provide, that our students need, and so there's some routes that are awarded to them as well. Safeway and Top Line, they appear to be able to provide the services, but their prices weren't as competitive as City Care. And finally, American Taxi, we are not recommending for approval due to service, due to service issues related that we've experienced this past year related to student safety. Service issues remain involving student drop-offs and pickup times and a lot of communication issues we've had. So we've logged many issues with them, though we just, we can in good faith recommend them to provide those services for us for the next year.
So Dan, what is then the, because this is a split award, how do you want to word that?
Yeah, so essentially, the, the award would go, recommend awarding, awarding the bid for special education transportation services for the 1819 school year, to City Care for the vast majority of routes that are listed.
Specify.
For you, and the Chain of Lakes for the routes that are, for the routes that are specified.
Okay.
So we could say as noted in the bid documents.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right.
I move to approve the special education transportation bid recommendation to the two providers as outlined in the.
Bid documents.
In the bid documents.
Second.
All right, discussion? Roll call.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
All right, I think.
Okay, that's it. All right, program personnel, number one, amended school calendar, one change.
One change to reflect the new school start time of 8:45 a.m. to 3:25 p.m.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the amended school calendar noting the change in start times?
I move to approve the amended school calendar to reflect the change in start time.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Board policy changes, first readings.
First reading on a number of policies and operational services, policy 480, accounting and audit. The policy footnotes and legal references are updated in response to is the best practice recommendations concerning the prevention of fraud, waste, and abuse, and the administration of grants covered by the Grant Accountability Transparency Act. The next three policies, policy 4140, policy 6120, policy 6230, are all updated with minor style changes to the language. Policy 6250, community resource persons and volunteers, this policy is updated to better reflect the purpose and use of our community resource persons and volunteers as defined by Illinois School Code. Students' policy 750, student admissions and student transfers to and from non-district schools. The policy is updated in response to Illinois School Code regarding a student's permanent record. And policy 7330, student use of buildings equal access, the policy is updated to add language for non-curriculum-related student groups that are not district-sponsored in regards to equal access to the building.
Okay, so no action needed tonight, we'll, we'll vote on those next month, right? Okay, is there anything else? No. Make sure we got it all. Okay, no property, no CDO, no IASB. So can I ask for, anybody else got any? Can I ask for motion to convene executive session? We will remove agenda item A, since we already voted on that, and then have only one item in the closed section, employment of an employee, 5 ILCs, 120/2C1.
I move to convene executive session.
All right, is there a second?
Second, for the purpose of discussion.
Employment of an employee.[1780.01]